Good evening, I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM Tuesday, May 18th, 2010. At this time, I would invite you to join us for the invocation and pledge. Commissioner Roark?
Mr. Ray, I want to thank all of the members of this country and the privilege of having a representative government that we can gather here this evening and be with us now as we conduct a business that we feel is relevant and give us wisdom to make good decisions and to conduct ourselves in an honorable manner, and we'll thank you for it. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Stamey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bassler, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation. As is the custom of this board, we like to recognize outgoing commissioners with a proclamation when they move on to other services. And this is in appreciation of Rick Jeffries, District Two Commissioner, 2009, 2010. Whereas Mr. Rick Jeffries has served the citizens of Henry County well as District Two Commissioner, providing both exceptional leadership and a powerful voice to advocate for the needs of the second district. And whereas during his tenure, Jeffries worked tirelessly to get several critical infrastructure projects underway to alleviate traffic and improve our quality of life, including the expansion of Hudson Bridge Road, the paving of Simpson Mill Road, and the Hampton Library, among many other projects. Whereas through his knowledge and expertise in water quality and environmental issues, Jeffries has provided vital leadership and advice that has helped to save the county hundreds of thousands of dollars on construction projects. And whereas Jeffries has dedicated his entire career to serving the public as the former city manager of Locust Grove, Director of Water and Wastewater Treatment for the City of Covington, and Director of Water and Water Pollution Control for the City of McDonough, as well as at the Henry County Water and Sewerage Authority. And whereas Jeffries also served on the Georgia Rural Water Association, the North Metropolitan Water District Board, the Water Pollution Control Federation, and American Water Works Association. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes to express a sincere appreciation to Mr. Rick Jeffries for his extraordinary dedication to the citizens of Henry County and for his outstanding contributions as District Two Commissioner from 2009 through 2010. Be it further proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes Mr. Jeffries much success in the days ahead, this 18th day of May, 2010. And if Mr. Jeffries is here, we'd like for him to come forward and receive the proclamation. (applause) agree on things, we respect one another, we appreciate the contributions that each member gives to make this board work better, and Mr. Jeffries is certainly going to be missed by all of us. Moving on to Planning and Zoning Services, the first item is a resolution accepting donations received for the purchase of frames to display artwork. Our presenters, Mr. Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, and Jason Morrison, Communications Department, and thus Exhibit Number Eight.
Thank you Chairman, members of the board. Been doing presentations to the board for a little while now, and this is by far one of the most exciting ones I had the opportunity to do. We, back in January, staff came to the board requesting authorization to seek donations for framing for a new arts initiative. And after discussions with you, with the commissioners, as well as with the members of the Board of Education, then we were directed by the Board of Commissioners to go ahead and proceed with this new arts initiative. We were authorized at that time to proceed with seeking funds, seeking donations from our private sector to cover the cost for the frames. We worked out with the, worked in conjunction with our Board of Education, and in particular, Ms. Joni Bowman from Strong, um, uh, Strong, no, not Strong Rock, Rock Springs, Rock Springs Elementary School. She was a key component of helping make sure this all came to fruition. She worked with the local art teachers to secure pieces of artwork from our local students to be displayed in the frames that were purchased with the donations from our, from the private sector. Earlier today, we had an opportunity to actually have the official unveiling of the new Henry County Gallery, if you will, which is being displayed on the overhead now. What we wanted to do right now with this resolution was actually a resolution to accept, authorization to accept the donations from numerous businesses and business entities that have graciously donated to help make this all come to, come to happen. To date, we have raised, received over $800 in donations, and the following businesses and agencies have donated. The McDonough Arts Council, the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority, Central Georgia EMC, Smith George Britton Law Firm, OB's Barbecue, and Dentistry for Children. At this time, staff is seeking authorization to accept those donations received, with the understanding that on our website, we've been working closely with Jason Morrison and Julie Hoover Ernst with our Communications Department. We will have a link in our website to allow other businesses or individuals, if they would like to donate in the future, to continue to expand this program. Right now, the initial display entitles, entails 27 pieces of artwork that have been framed. And again, the goal initially was 60 pieces. We have since heard from other agencies, in particular the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority, Mercer University, asking if they could also participate in this program. So, and again, it's really starting to kind of catch fire, and you know, we're excited about the opportunity to be able to display and really showcase, you know, the talent and the works of our, of our local students. So again, at this time, we are seeking authorization for acceptance of the donations.
Well, I have to say, the artwork is extraordinary, and it has added so much to that, that area out there, just spectacular. The kids are to be commended for the work that they've done. It is just amazing, really is. I don't know if any other commissioner would like to comment on that or not, but I was very, very impressed with all of that that I saw. They're shaking their head yes, so.
All right, at this time, we do have a resolution before us authorizing the acceptance of the monetary donations for the arts initiative, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Bowman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero, and at this time, we would like to invite those who have donated funds toward the framing of this artwork, and also our artists to come forward. We would like to get a group photograph.
Chairman, before I walk away, I wanted to clarify, Snappy and Shoals EMC is one of our, also one of our principal donors as well, Snappy and Shoals EMC. Thank you.
One, Mr. Holder has been working on an art initiative down in the first district, and that was through the acquisition of the Le Guin Win House, which is a historic property that's been donated back for use to the Henry Arts Alliance, if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, some of you who may not know, we had the recent closing of acquiring this property through donation, but it's the old Le Guin home place that goes back to the 1830s or 40s. And like 25% has to be, well, Tanya, help me.
At the house has to be devoted to arts and crafts for young people.
At no charge.
At no charge.
At no charge.
Trying to reduce charge.
25% of the activities have to be at no charge, and it also spells out elementary and high school, it's just, it's for the kids. And I want to say this, I know very little about art, but when you walk out and you look and you see the progression of the work that these kids have put out, I think we certainly need to appreciate the artists, but we also need to appreciate the art instructors. And there are several in the county that I certainly know and have known for years, but you see the, you're reaping the benefits of your teachings, and I want to say thank you because, and many of the people that are watching tonight can see where it's come from elementary all the way up through high school. And I certainly hope they don't stop at high school, but I want to say thank you to the instructors and also to the, to the young artists. Thank you.
We're going to move on under our public hearings section, and that's going to be for amendments to the ULDC Unified Land Development Code. The first one being Zip and Debbie Hinton of Locust Grove, Georgia request an amendment to the ULDC to allow private airstrips outside of a fly-in community in the RA Zone District. Our presenters, Ms. Sherri Hopson Matthews, Director of Planning and Zoning, Exhibit Number Nine. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. Okay. Just a second. Ms. Sherwin Matthews has indicated Zip and Debbie Hinton submitted a request to the Planning and Zoning Department requesting to amend the Unified Land Development Code. Currently, the code only allows for private airstrips in fly-in communities and in areas that are currently zoned M1 and M2. So if you are a property owner that's outside of a subdivision and you're zoned RA, R1, R2, R3, or any other zoning designation, you would not be allowed to have a private airstrip. What the applicants want to do is to amend the code to allow for private airstrips only in RA's zone properties outside of a subdivision. The request did go before the zoning advisory board, and the zoning advisory board moved to approve the request, but with some modifications. The zoning advisory board felt that a conditional use would need to be required for each individual applicant and not to allow it outright. They also requested that approval be granted by the FAA. I did contact the FAA, and they indicated that they would not provide any type of letter or anything regarding private airstrips, so that may not be something that can be done. At this time, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Does any board member have a question for Ms. Matthews?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder.
Couple of questions that come to mind. I'm certainly not opposed to a private airstrip or helipad or anything being out in RA zoned property, but a concern of mine has to be the adjoining property owner and the minimum acreage requirement. But as an example, and I'm not versed enough on aviation to know what, what the limits are, but let's do a, for instance, say it's a 20-acre tract and planes have the right landing zone and takeoff and what have you. What if behind that property, there's a property owner with farm animals or livestock of any sort or structure? Many of these aircraft come in very low when it comes, because they just do. And I'm basically using mallards as an example because that's, that's, I see it. My question is, and I'm sure the applicant or some of their people or staff can provide us with that information, but that's, that is a concern of mine. And beyond that, that's about the question that I have.
Okay. We talked about it prior to the meeting, and I think I threw out a number maybe 100 feet from the property lines, but again, I'm not as versed in knowing what the requirements would be as far as noise and the landing of the planes. I know that the applicant, Mr. Hinton, was very versed during the zoning advisory board. I'm pretty much laying out some of the requirements that he's had to meet in the past, and he may know better, but I do agree with you that a buffer should be put in place. As far as that number, it would be at the discretion of the board.
And I don't know what that discretion is because at this point, I have no, do you know? Does any board member know? I, I'm just not well-versed enough in aviation to know.
Well, if you have a really, really technical question, I see out in the audience that we have Mr. Doug Murphy, who I believe, are you the South Regional Director of the FAA, but he probably could answer technical questions if we wanted to press him into service. He's not here on this issue, but if we twisted his arm, perhaps he would come up and be willing to answer some questions.
Question I have, I mean, everyone has heard it, I don't know what requirement would need to be met as a buffer.
Part of the wording here says comply with all applicable standards and requirements of the Georgia Department of Transportation, FAA. Do they, do they have guidelines for some of these things?
They do not.
Or is it just?
No, sir. For private airstrips, it's pretty much they're on their own. They have no regulations or applicable guidelines as far as buffering.
The reason that the zoning advisory board requested the, that it be approved, that it be a conditional use, is so that each individual tract of property could be reviewed to determine whether or not there would be issues such as what Commissioner Holder has brought up. You could have a 10-acre tract that's very narrow, almost a flag lot, that would really impact properties in close proximity, so each one would be different. And the other question I had about this too, is this kind of unusual that we have a citizen that requests a modification to the, or an amendment to the ULDC? Generally, that comes from staff, so I'm curious about that.
It generally does, but when we adopted the Unified Land Development Code in September, that was a new provision of the code. So an individual or citizen can come forward with a text amendment, and it can come before our zoning advisory board and then subsequently to you all.
All right, any other questions?
Sherri, is there a minimum acres requirement on this?
The applicant was requesting 10 acres. Staff recommended five, but when the zoning advisory board reviewed the request, they did not put in any type of minimum acreage.
Okay, with that same question, is there a minimum length to the minimum runway?
No, sir. It's all based on the type of jetliner or the type of plane that they're flying, and I think that determines the length.
You said jetliner?
I'm sorry, the type of, the type of air helicopter or type of plane that they're driving, not driving, flying.
You hot tonight, Sherri?
Yes.
She probably knows more about aviation than she wanted to at this point.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? I guess at this time, we'll call the applicant or their representative to come forward and make your presentation. We're going to, I think we're going to get an education tonight. If you would state your name for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Andy Welch. I'm representing the Hinton's in this modification or amendment to the zoning ordinance request that's before you tonight. Mr. Zip Hinton is here with me as well to try and answer some of your questions that you have, the technical questions. Let me begin by saying that the request comes to you as, from a property rights perspective. The zoning ordinance as it is right now does not allow for a private person that has ample acreage to operate a private landing strip or private airstrip on his or her property. As you are probably very aware, there are numerous private and some public airports within Henry County. Berry Hill being a public airport, Mallard's Landing being a private. There are numerous smaller private airstrips throughout Henry County, in addition to those that I mentioned. This being, would be one of those. You're correct in what you've heard, that the FAA does not have any guidelines or regulations for, that regulate private airstrips. Those are left essentially to the property owner, the locality, and the, the only regulation that, that exists is that you notify the FAA that you're, that you have a private airstrip, that you're operating a private airstrip, so that they know where you are, and then they'll mark you on a map, so that people flying know where there are private airstrips throughout the nation. And that way, they know also that you're operating in that very jurisdiction. If there's any safety hazard as a result of that, interacting with another private and public airstrip, then that will also factor into their analysis. But generally speaking, you just notify them, and then they, then once they have that notice, they place it on a map. So it's just a marker on a map. And what we've done is we've asked for this as a, as a permitted use under the RA zoning classification, because that has the largest acreage, and it is in a rural residential type setting. The property that Mr. Hinton owns is 84 acres. The, he has contract on an additional 25 acres, additional 25 acres. So we are talking about a very rural piece of property in a very remote part of the county, it's a south Henry County. And for that, we talked to the Planning and Zoning Commission about it, the zoning advisory board. The zoning advisory board felt that it was important that, that the government, Henry County, has a level of regulation over each and every private airstrip that would want to come in. In that respect, it was suggested that they adopt a conditional use, that the amendment be a conditional use permit, so that the zoning advisory board could evaluate each application for a private airstrip on a case-by-case basis to exactly address the points that each one of you made tonight, which is, is the property suitable for that? Is it large enough for it? What is the impacts on the adjoining neighbors? Is there, should there be a buffer? Should there be some other conditions imposed upon the use of the private airstrip, all of which to regulate its impacts on the adjoining properties? And we felt like that was appropriate as well, that that be the process, that that be the form of the amendment come as a conditional use. We recommended on our own that there be a minimum acreage established, and that minimum acreage should be 10 acres. The landing strip that Mr. Hinton wants to utilize is a, would essentially be about eight acres. It's a 2,000-foot strip, about, what, 100 feet wide?
Yeah, 100 feet wide.
About 100 feet wide, so you're getting into nearly 10 acres of land that you would need for the strip. So you can see that a reasonably sized private grass landing strip, you know, is going to take some substantial acreage to put it on. So we actually said that we didn't think five acres was enough, you really needed a 10-acre minimum to even consider a conditional use. We thought that was appropriate. That way, you would narrow the scope of applications and set some reasonable regulations for it. We also suggested that the landing strip be made, be maintained as a grass landing strip, so that there would not be an appurvious surface applied to the, to the ground. And so essentially, it would remain a private recreational-type flying landing strip. Once you start paving these surfaces, I think that creates a runoff problem, it creates an appurvious surface, and you know, then it, then you're opening your door, I think opening up yourself for greater use than I think a private airstrip should probably have. So we had suggested that is also as a condition you would put on those conditional use permits. But this is essentially a very straightforward request. If we, if, as it is right now, the ordinance would exclude any private property owner that has residential property, exclude him or her from having a hobby, private, private air, excuse me, private airstrip as an airplane hobby, a flying hobby. So right now, you know, you would not be allowed to do that anywhere in Henry County where you have a sizable lot by which you could do it. The only way, the only place you can do it is if you get your property zoned to an industrial zoning classification. And that would certainly not be appropriate, given that where we're talking about doing this is rural residential, and, and I don't think this board wants to get into the position of trying to spot zone industrial property in rural areas just for the purpose of a private landing strip, you know, private airstrip. So that didn't make sense. And then looking at the future land use map, your comprehensive land use plan, this particular property that's, that's the subject of the, while we're bringing this request, is, is in a very rural area, and industrial would not be suited. The only alternative is to do it as a fly-in subdivision. So you have to create a fly-in community, which means you're going into rural areas and subdividing the property into multiple lots for a fly-in community. Well, that's not Mr. Hinton's desire, he's not trying to create a, another mallards landing, he wants this as a private strip for himself. That would require an additional rezoning and more processes to go through. So looking at the ordinance, there really isn't a way for a single-lot owner to, to put in a private airstrip for his or her own personal hobby use, and that would effectively exclude uses that exist now and any future uses. And as you may know, Henry County is one of the leading counties, it may be the most populated county with airport employees in the county. So we have a strong base of pilots and aviation engineers that live in Henry County and who do fly as a hobby. So it seemed like the proper request, and that was to bring it to you, using the ULDC, the Unified Land Development Code's amendment provisions, to come to you and ask for your approval of this amendment. We do think it should be a conditional use, we do think you should set some standards for permits that should govern those permits, and we ask that you vote to approve that amendment. If you have any questions, Zip and I are here to take them.
I have a couple. The first one I'd like to ask is, of course, Henry County is transitioning from more of an agrarian type of community to a more urban type of setting with the continued growth going forward in the future. Looking to other counties in the metro area, how do they handle similar issues like this? Are, are the private airstrips allowed in other counties?
As a matter of fact, Spalding County, which is also, I believe, well, it's not part of ARC yet, but the neighbor to the south, and actually that joins this particular property, Spalding County has, has approved a conditional use permit. It's a special exception there, but it's essentially the same process we're talking about here. They have approved that permit for this property, the portion of the property in Spalding County to be used as a private airstrip. And so we, we have gone through that process. So our neighboring county to the south that actually joins Mr. Hinton's property has this very process in place by which, if you're in a rural part of the county and you wish to have a private airstrip, you may do so, but you have to go through a permitting process to do that.
What about the more populated counties, Clayton? What about the more populated counties, Clayton, Cab, Cobb, Gwinnett, Fulton?
I've not done any research into the other counties to determine, you know, what their ordinance is, you know, what their ordinance is, how their ordinance is addressed this particular issue.
And then the other question I have, and you may or may not even have an answer for this, is the impact on the future properties surrounding that and the value of that property, will this diminish that value if someone wanted to develop, say, into an R2 subdivision or R1 subdivision, but having an airstrip next to it impact the value of that property for development purposes in the future?
Well, I think that's a, that question is gonna require me to completely speculate on what happens on adjoining property. And the fundamental principle here is, is that the owner of the property would submit an application for conditional use that would then be adjudicated by the planning, the zoning advisory board to determine whether or not that particular application for that particular property, given all the surrounding circumstances, is appropriate. So, you won't, all you're doing today is considering whether you will amend it to allow for that process. As it is right now, you can't, there is no, you know, it's either industrial or there's nothing.
Let me give you an example.
Yeah.
Eagle Brook came after Mallards Landing. So, we have heard, when we started Mallards Landing, it was a big deal about property values and that type of stuff, and property only went up around it. And nothing went down, Sherri.
So, you know, we have history in the county where that's occurred and other development that comes in behind it and those values aren't diminished as a result of it. But, you know, what I'm, my point I'm making is that you won't know until you take, until you have the process by which you can analyze that, you can address that very question for a particular piece of property. And we're asking for you to create that provision in the ordinance so that someone can go through the process and then make that determination on a case-by-case basis.
Any board members?
I'd just like to make a comment to back up what Mr. Hinton said, and that is the fact that Mallards was there before the industrial development and the residential development occurred along Highway 155. Then Eagle Brook comes in. Also, right over, one of the runways is Heron Bay. So, am I right, Mr. Hinton?
Yes, again, it didn't slow them down.
So, I mean, that in itself, you could argue the point about property values, but it has not kept anyone from developing in the general area around the airport. And Mallards has been there since when, Zip?
I think we first started in 88.
88, so 22 years.
And that was, and as you recall, that was an extremely rural part of Henry County at the time. And so, you know, in factoring those things in, you know, you would consider that even within a rural setting, as growth came to Mallards Landing, it has not had an adverse impact on that, on those developments or property values. And so, again, looking at the rural areas, looking at, looking at a case-by-case basis, you can make that determination. But as it is right now, you don't have that process.
Any other board member with a question, comment?
I just have a comment, I mean, I just actually asked Commissioner Holder about one on Jonesboro Road, and I think he said it might be Ronnie Thornton's property now, and that has a strip on it. Of course, I don't know that we, and there again, Mr. Commissioner Holder also stated that it's been in for a long time, so we didn't have any, there was no such thing as...
Jim Plank put that one in, didn't he?
Yeah, Jim put that in, 15 years ago, probably.
At least, yeah.
So, you know, with 84 acres, you know, I just think that you just gotta look at, you know, some type of buffer areas, you know.
And I think, again, it's a case-by-case, a conditional use issue to where it's not because, someone may say, well, the case-by-case is because who it is making application, that has nothing to do with it, but you have to look at the surrounding area, the topography and many things that would, somebody, just because someone had 84 acres like Mr. Hinton has, it might not be suitable for that, but it would just have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis.
Sherri, if the amendment, if the board votes to approve the amendment for it to come as a conditional use, then your department will have to sit down and come up with a list of standard criteria by which each request would be evaluated, is that right?
That is something that we can do, but it would probably need to be in the form of a motion by you all for us to come up with supplemental standards so that we can go ahead and start on it. I will tell you, if you're in the current Unified Land Development Code, if you're in a fly-in community, the minimum buffer is 40 feet. So, that's for a fly-in subdivision, and I just read that in the ordinance. And one other point is, if the board does move to approve it and allow for it to go as a conditional use, then those conditional uses would be heard only by the zoning advisory board, so it would not come before your board.
Is there a question?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions?
So, if we approve this request tonight, this doesn't, this doesn't directly make the decision on your property, this just says, okay, you can, you now have an avenue where you can come back and apply for conditional use, so is that correct?
Yes.
And going back to the comment that I made earlier, I would need some education and to know what the standard should be. It seems almost not equitable for a 40-foot buffer to be required along a landing strip or a runway when there's only 25 feet, in some cases 50 feet, required between commercial and residential property where there are no airplanes flying. So, I mean, things like that, you know, I think need to be looked at and addressed before it's finalized. And tonight, I mean, as far as approving the fact that we are amending the code to allow this, I don't think it's a finished product. I think we're gonna have to see, to dig into this more to see what the conditions are gonna be.
And I think one other way we can look at it is if you all do move to approve it, you can word your motion in a manner in which staff, along with the development planning review department, will come up with development standards based on the individual request that comes in. So, if we don't have supplemental standards tonight, I think we can do some more research and look at some other jurisdictions to kind of get an idea of what they allow for private airstrips.
And those would require a public hearing also, would they not, to be adopted into?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, the people would be notified of that hearing, and if anyone has interest in it, then you certainly have a right to object to it or to support it or whatever the case might be.
Madam Chairman, I think the better practice would be to, if you're going to adopt the amendment, that those supplemental conditions be done at the same time, because otherwise you're going to, and I don't know if Sherri is proposing to adopt it subject to the development of those standards, but that still would not make the amendment go into effect. So, in your words, Commissioner Holder, it will be an unfinished product if that were the motion. In other words, if you're gonna have the supplemental conditions to accompany this request, it should be in one package and not separated.
Let me ask the other question. Is this something that has to be adopted tonight, or can we adopt the standards, or not adopt the standards, work on the standards and come back with the amendment and the adoption in a reasonable time?
No, we, no, there's no, there's no time crunch on this, and as I've mentioned, and if you read the minutes back to the zoning advisory board meeting, you know, we recommended that there be some conditions placed on a conditional use permit. One of those mean that it shouldn't be paved, a minimum of 10 acres, and I think a buffer, and we've talked about that as a buffer being appropriate. And I think you, you know, what the size of the buffer may need to be dictated, you may want to state a minimum buffer of 50, 40 feet, whatever you, what do you think is appropriate, but that buffer should, I think you all have to give yourself the room to expand the buffer depending on the nature of the land uses around it. So, you know, we're advocating for an amendment to a zoning ordinance, not only for Mr. and Mrs. Hinton, but we're looking at it from the perspective of, you know, this has to work for all of Henry County. This cannot be something that works only for Mr. Hinton's context, it needs to work for everyone, and in that sense, you need to set, I think, standards, and I think Ms. Wiley is exactly correct, that it would be better if you go ahead and set those standards in your resolution to approve the conditional use process and include those minimum standards that you want to see as part of that. I think that's, that is the best way to go.
Would it might?
Then I will table this until the staff brings the input from the board, brings it back, that we can adopt it, or put it, you know...
With criteria for? Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Holder to table, did you have a question?
Before we move to...
Do you have a question?
No, I'm good, yeah.
Okay. Is there going to be a set amount of time on that, or?
So, I asked, did you want it put to the next evening meeting in June?
I would like to word my motion to say a reasonable period of time, and I don't think we're gonna let it just continue to go on and on, unaddressed, and I don't believe staff will do that. And rather than say in 30 days or 60 days, I'd rather say a reasonable period of time. And that's what I'll put in my view.
All right, we have a motion to table this request for a reasonable period of time to allow staff to develop a set of criteria by which to review a conditional use on a private airstrip. We have a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all.
The next item is a request for approval of an ordinance amending multiple sections of the ULDC in accordance with Section 120211 and 120300, and this is going to be presented by Sherri Hobson Matthews, Director of Planning and Zoning, and Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, Exhibit Number 10.
Again, Chairman, board members, the request is much like the previous request, this one is, as you alluded to earlier, this one is a request actually from staff for amendments to the ULDC. We've spoken to the commissioners and come before the commissioners a few times before. Just a little bit of a history, back at the time the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the complan was being completed, we were awarded a grant from ARC, Community Choices, where they came in, actually did an assessment of all of our documents, particularly the ULDC, the Comprehensive Plan, the CTP, and reviewed those documents to make sure they all, they all were coordinated. At the end of their assessment, they had, they came up with a list of recommendations that they're recommending for our ULDC. Staff has reviewed those recommendations, and in that same timeframe, staff has also gone forward and looked at text changes and other amendments that we felt were necessary. As we began, you know, as we stated from the very beginning, we knew there'd be issues that we may need to address as we go forward, and we've discovered some, principally text changes, but there were some other, some other issues that we thought were important to bring before the board as a ULDC amendment, and we're bringing those items, I think right now it's 26 items that are currently been, that are listed. There was one we wanted to also add this evening as we were talking over, slight modifications to our current record ordinance as well. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to address them. At this time, I was gonna ask Sherri to kind of go over the, again, the majority of the amendments are principally text amendments, there are a couple that are beyond that, the first one being the changes to the conversion of previous zoning districts.
As Michael has indicated, most of the changes are text changes, but I wanted to make sure I highlighted some of the recommendations or the recommendation made by the zoning advisory board. And if you look at your exhibit on item number 11, the zoning advisory board has recommended that the text be amended to state that fences and walls do not require a building permit except walls in excess of four feet in height. And then on item number 16, that's just been reworded so that it can read correctly, where ground signs shall not be permitted on non-residential lots where there is no structure. A majority of the other changes, again, are text errors or grammatical errors, but most importantly, item number one is the conversion of previous zoning districts. The way the code is currently written, a lot of properties were rezoned as a result of, or not rezoned, but the zoning changed on the property as a result of the Unified Land Development Code. So, what that resulted in is a number of subdivisions that may have had one or two lots, or maybe five or six lots that were already built. And what this would have allowed is for you to come in and build another home but at a different set of development standards. Looking at this, staff thought, and then talking to a number of the board members, we thought that this may not be aesthetically pleasing in a number of subdivisions where there are already homes constructed. So, the language has been changed to reflect that if you are a subdivision that's currently zoned or that was platted prior to the adoption of the Unified Land Development Code, then you are bound by the development standards that were in place at the time that your subdivision was platted. I'll be more than happy to answer any of the other text changes if you should have any.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this?
I just got one quick one, because I may have misunderstood Mike, that back on number 11 where it says, add fences and walls do not require a building permit. Did you, did we talk about if it was gonna be a structural wall, that it would require one, is that what you and I talked about?
That's correct, and the language is gonna change to be fences and walls under four feet in height. So, anything above four feet in height would require, if you want to add the particular, the specific language of structural, if there's the potential for a structural wall less...
The only thing I would, the only issue I'd have with that is where you've got like six-foot chain link fence, you don't need anything for that, and, you know, a six-foot privacy wood fence where you're just, you know, you're dropping some full bad and, you know, concrete and doing, so if we go into that, I think the walls probably is a good idea specifically if they're structural and there's, you know, footings and other things required in there, we should do that. But under the four-foot thing, I, when I was thinking about it after you'd spoke to me and I thought, what, now a chain link fence, the majority of them in this county is six-foot, so you'd have to go get a permit, put up a chain link fence, I don't think that's...
Yeah, well, the four-foot requirement would just apply to walls only, not to fences.
Oh, to walls?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any wall under four-foot height.
Okay, well, I've just seen fences, okay.
Yeah, and that was one of the changes. One other thing was, I mentioned it briefly, in regards to the requirements for proposed record services, we have listed in Table 4-0302.21E, and a couple of the items that were not addressed within that ordinance, and we've since had conversations with our county manager, and we're recommending a few modifications, particularly the addition of a buffer requirement in that case, establishing a minimum office size, identifying signage requirements, a slight modification to the lot size, in this case, right now it's a minimum lot size of two acres, and holds it would be for, within a minimum lot size of two acres in M1 and one acre in M2. And lastly, the, it currently is required to have a conditional use with this, and the recommendation was to forego the conditional use and to stand on these new supplemental standards. And again, any other questions you may have, we'd be happy to, Sherri, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any other questions or comments? Because this is an amendment to our ordinance, are we required to call for public comment? All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in reference to this particular amendment. Kathy Wood, please state your name and address for the record.
Steve Cash, 2000 Flat Rock Road, Stockbridge, Georgia. I just, I guess, I just need a little more information. This means that we've already got a subdivision started and homes are in it, there's no changing down the line, period, right? No modifications made?
Not without coming back before the board.
Okay, okay.
I would think the process would be the same as a modification to any zoning that's already existing that would have to come back before the board.
Okay, I just may have heard it wrong, I thought, I thought I heard that we could not come back to the board for modifications for that subdivision.
Now, I think what they were saying is that under the old zoning conditions, in R2, you were required to have an 18,000-square-foot lot, whereas under the new, I think there's flexibility in the size of the lot.
Okay.
The flexibility in size would not apply to an existing subdivision that already had homes in it because it would be inconsistent with other homes already built, people bought houses in a subdivision with a certain set of standards. So, to allow that change to take place simply because the ULDC changed would not be fair to a homeowner or so.
Okay, I understand now, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in reference to this? If you would, please state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Steve Richardson, 207 Wind Drive Hampton. About the record services thing...
About the record services thing, I, I didn't know this was coming tonight, so I apologize, I don't have any paperwork, but the, the issues with the fencing only being six-foot tall and no cars over the fence, tractor trailer is thirteen-six tall, so it by nature is already above the fence, so if, if we could table this to another time till we get this worked out, because by nature, tractor trailer is tall on the fence, and there's several other issues that we need to talk about. I'd sent an email, I don't know if you got it.
Just as a point of clarification, the way it reads regarding storage of vehicles, let me read it real quick. Towed vehicles shall be stored within an enclosed secured area not accessible to the public. No wrecked vehicle shall exceed the height of the fence or wall, nor be allowed outside the enclosed area. Storage of non-ventilated vehicles prohibited, storage area must be minimum gravel covered. So in this case, the, the, it specifically says, no wrecked vehicles shall exceed the height of the wall. And I think you're referring to...
By nature, wrecked tractors. No, by nature. If it's a wrecked tractor, it's twelve, it's thirteen-six tall, so. I, there's just a little tweaking, if we could just table this till next time, and then if that's...
Mr. Holder?
If I could. What he's saying is exactly right. We require the fence to be as high as, as high as the wrecked or stored vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you're gonna have to have a fourteen-foot fence, and I don't know where one exists. I mean, you know, being practical about the matter.
Steve and members of the board, I don't have a problem with delaying that section of, of these changes. If we have a chance to discuss that with Steve and others, there may be one or two changes that need to be made, that may need to be tweaked a little bit. These, this is an item which we've been involved in, in discussion for, for quite a few weeks. We're just trying to update the guidelines according to some of the conditions that were placed on the use in the past, and a couple more weeks is not going to, not gonna hurt anything.
Let me ask you something. Do I make a motion to table the, all of this? This is a lot of proposals, Michael, the global...
Just the, just the record service section.
Just the record service requirements, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we would ask that... Make a motion to approve all the others with, and table the record service requirements for a future day.
I mean, is this something we have to amend tonight? If we table this for thirty days, the entire amendment, everything, could we do it all at one time again?
You sort of could.
The amount of support of the board, which way the board would like to go, but...
That's the board's desire.
I didn't mean to cause all that.
No, I'm, I'm, there's a lot to it, Steve, and it's, it's just not one thing that applies to you. There's many other things that probably needs to be reconsidered, so...
Yeah, that's the board's desire, and we would request that it come back. It's already been heard by the zoning advisory board, so if it's the choice of the...
Well, I don't mind putting a date on it, thirty days out, you know, but...
Or the next evening meeting.
It, well, put it, still put it thirty days out.
The third Tuesday night of June.
Okay, I mean, you fine with that, Butch?
Absolutely. It may take, it sounds like it may take a work session to go over these individually and flesh them out a little bit.
Mr. Banzer, you have a question, comment?
Madam Chair, Chair, we went into, is it a time issue with, with some of these zonings? That's what concerns me because of the, something that Mr. Cash had brought up, that if indeed we've, we've got this, I don't want to say blanket, but if we've, if we've come back and with the new ULDC, it's not, with the zoning issues, is there, is there, have there been issues of that brought to our attention, or is that some, have we got some problems there that needs to be corrected immediately, or?
As far as item number one, I think that that's something that we need to correct immediately, because we've had a number of requests that have come in due to properties now being originally R2, and now they're R3. So you do have a lot of requests where applicants see that the, the code will allow for some flexibility, more particularly in those setback requirements and minimum house sizes.
And the thing to that is, in my opinion, that's not fair to the citizens who have bought homes in subdivisions that was zoned in R2, and this, whether it be this board or whichever board, has went through the process to get that zoning. And these standards set in place, and now we're coming back just because the ULDC was adopted. We've changed our standards to the taxpayer and citizens who have bought these homes. So I personally have an issue. If, if that is critical, then we, we, I don't know if we need to address that tonight, or can that wait for two weeks?
Well, you can, if you wanted to approve the amendment to Section one eleven zero zero, which is that first item that seems to be causing the most concern, you can do that, and you can table the remainder until the third Tuesday night in June.
Let me ask you something, ma'am. Sheri, is there anything, is there anything up for rezoning in the next four weeks?
There are no rezonings, but someone could, today could go into development plan review and do a lot, replat their lot, and meet the minimum requirements of the underlying zoning that they have today, without it coming back before you all.
Okay.
We need to make us, we, we've gotta stop that, because we've got neighborhoods out there, Eagles Landing is a perfect example, it's got, you know, fifty or sixty lots left, and, and all of a sudden, somebody come in there and build, you know, thirty-foot to the road instead of a forty-foot setback, or the same thing at Eagle Brook, or the same, you know, the same thing in any of them, and turn around, and that's, that is not how they were conditioned when they were brought before a board, at this board, long before I ever got on the board, but I mean, it was, it, there was a condition on that, so, you know, that can't, that just couldn't fly. They would be, I, I believe there would be a lot of legal issues involved with that by the time that everybody got through suing everybody, it just wouldn't be that good of a deal, because that, and that's what you're doing, you're cleaning that up with that one section, so, no, we, we don't need to let that sit, because somebody comes in, I mean, we would just be like, you, you know more about the neighborhoods than I do, but there's a lot of neighborhoods out there that are half-built out, that all of a sudden, instead of R2, now they're R3. And that's just not good.
So, is the board in consensus then that for the record service requirement, that definitely is okay to put off until the third Tuesday night in June? All right, and then the next question is, do we, does, is it the board's pleasure to go ahead and accept the amendment for the first section, and then come back for that third Tuesday meeting in June for the remainder, or is it the board's wishes to go ahead and adopt all of these and just wait on the record amendment?
Can I make a motion? We, we approve the ULDC text tonight, just number one, and leave him two, three, is it twenty? Twenty-six, table the other twenty-six or twenty-five of them, Michael? I mean, I see the importance of one, but I also see the importance of the elements, too, that need to be looked at a little more closer to make sure we're not missing anything else.
And we would ask that number eleven and number sixteen, as noted by Sheri, those, those changes as well.
Is everybody okay with also eleven and sixteen, one eleven and sixteen? Approving those amendments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll include those in my minutes.
My motion's eleven and sixteen, include one eleven and sixteen.
All right, so we have a motion to approve one eleven and sixteen, table the remainder until the third Tuesday night in June. You have a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Bowman. Any further discussion?
Do we need to read those specific sections into the record, or just if we say one eleven and sixteen, does that suffice?
Will be section number one.
Off of this Exhibit A list, or do we need to say one eleven zero zero and Section seven zero two zero four, Section seven zero four one zero?
Thank you, just read.
You just did that. Any further discussion? Commissioner Holder, the motion was to approve item number one eleven and sixteen tonight, and then to table the remaining items until the, the third Tuesday in June. We had a motion by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Bowman.
Understood.
All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to request approval of a resolution expressing the intent of the board of commissioners to enter into an intergovernmental contract with the Henry County Development Authority in connection with the issuance of its economic development revenue bond, the Terra Field Project Series two thousand and ten, to pledge certain ad valorem tax revenues pursuant to OCGA Section forty-eight dash five dash two twenty twenty, and that's gonna be handed out number one. Good evening. If you would, state your name for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Lynn Goff, and on behalf of the Big Five developers and partners, architects, engineers, builders, and family and friends, I am pleased to prove, stand before you this evening to give you a brief update prior to consideration of a positive vote for the creation of a resolution to enter into an intergovernmental agreement in connection with the issuance of credit enhanced bonds. I believe I said that correctly. As a developer for twenty-seven years, it's always been a dream to be involved with a legacy such as the project that's being presented to Henry County in the area adjacent to the Atlanta Motor Speedway in Terra Field. It would seem that would be, the same would be true for elected officials such as yourselves. This is the opportunity to create life-changing experiences for the constituents, these constituents here in Henry County. Over the past few weeks, we've received quite a bit of support from different blue ribbon committees of the state and United States Congressmen, our commissioner, U.S. Commissioners, our advisors, everyone we've spoken to have all affirmed that this is a solid viable project. We just recently gave you a financial viability report, which you've received and we've reviewed. All parts of those proposals have been received in a positive light. We would also note that there have been significant concessions made by the Big Five group, notwithstanding our personal guarantees, as well as the bond for title opportunity with ninety-seven acres of land, six existing hangars, fifty-one thousand square feet of new hangars, and a hundred thousand square feet of sound stages. Today, we were respectfully asked for you to vote and give us a resounding yes to our request, and we would suggest that if a taxpayer has an issue with your vote, to ask him or her what their plan would be, because this is a significant opportunity for your county, and we would challenge any taxpayer to come up with a plan that produces better results than this one we put before you. Very quickly, again, the status of our economy is as bad as it's been since perhaps the Great Depression. We've experienced loss of home income, not to say, not to mention our health and our welfare. Currently, as we've discussed before, as elected officials, you typically have two recourses when we have economic downturns. Those are to raise taxes, or to cut services to the point that you have an ineffective government. The mission of Big Five was to give a third option, which is to simply create a secured access aviation-driven development, which would also feature a sound stage. Within that plan is fifty thousand square feet of new aviation, a new FBO with increased aviation services, and over a hundred thousand square feet of state-of-the-art sound designs. And very quickly, our timeline, two of the most significant events that probably happened were in January, on January tenth, we actually publicly announced the intent to build the sound stages and the aviation development at Terra Field. But during the past three months, we've been able to resolve issues with Clayton County and Henry County and the FAA. We, on February the fourth, the Henry, excuse me, Henry County Development Authority issued, induced the bond issuance, because it met three criteria, three criteria. Creates jobs for Henry County, brings investment dollars to Henry County, and it promotes tourism in, in, in Henry County. In February two thousand and ten, we were able to pass non-aviation use resolutions with Clayton County Board of Commissioners. February fifteenth, we made the initial presentation to this group. February twenty-fourth, the follow-up presentation to the Henry County Chamber of Commerce. March one, additional information was presented to this group. March thirteenth, we signed our first agreement with our first preferred vendor agreement, in which Lowe's Home Improvement Warehouse will become a preferred vendor. That simply states that we are in partnership with a local commercial enterprise, that all money and applicable purchases that come from Atlanta Film Studios, including new construction, will be purchased here in Henry County. April fourth, we met with, I'm sorry, March twenty-ninth, I skipped. At that point, we met with this group, and at that time, we were requested to produce a financial viability report, which we did, and we have reviewed that with you in individual meetings as well as a public meeting. April fourth, we met the City of Hampton and received their formal support. April twenty-eighth is when we gave the separate meetings to each of you on the viability, financial viability. May fourth, Gary Mungin of Bleakley Advisory Group presented to this group, and then today we are here to formally request that you induce or approve the resolution to induce credit enhanced bonds. One of the most interesting things of this project has been the opportunity to create working partnerships with, here within Henry County. We haven't had to go outside the borders to bring together, to create working relationships. In particular, in the area of the Speedway, we do have the Atlanta Motor Speedway, we have the City of Hampton, we have Laster Properties, we have FAA, we have Clayton County, we have Big Five, and we have Doug Walker, our local businessmen, who are all interested and willing to work with us on this project in working relationships, once we gain the approval of our bonds. One of the most significant things for this county over the last twenty-five years, dating back to nineteen sixty, actually, but the most, most recent twenty-five years, has been the economic impact that you receive from the Atlanta Motor Speedway. My relationship, as I've shared with you before, is that I've known Ed Clark for twenty years. He's had Lasik surgery and couldn't be here tonight, but wanted to share with you a couple thoughts about the importance of creating an additional stimulus here at the Atlanta Motor Speedway. It's very comparable to what is being done at the Kansas Speedway. They are building a casino adjoining that racetrack to create more destination opportunities. We see this studio as the opportunity to create further stimulation of the western part of this county that would help Ed keep his second race. And one of the things I think we tend to take for granted, and Ed and I talked about this on Friday, is that NASCAR will continue to traditionally give races wherever races are being held. Ed's track is always talked about losing his March race. So one of the things we're looking at with our working relationships with these different folks I just mentioned, was to begin to stimulate some of that commercial and retail development with a hotel, a conference center, and those sorts of things in that close proximity. We also have with us, and in support of our project, is Jim Baker. Now, Jim Baker is, as most of you know, is a longtime developer in metro Atlanta. The president of his company, Dan Keener, is here tonight. Do you have any comments that you'd like to share with us this evening? Okay, we met with Jim Baker, and he's just very interested in what we're doing. Again, all these other components that we want to bring a total picture, a total package. Just very quickly, some of the support we've received, Atlanta Motor Speedway, CBS Films with Tracy McGrath, City of Hampton issued a proclamation in support. Clayton State College has, has expressed interest in getting developed, developing a campus down here. Hampton Downtown Development Authority issued proclamation. This very board issued a proclamation of support. Chamber of Commerce, the Council for Quality Growth, the Development Authority, of course, with a five-O inducement, the relationship with Lowe's, Metro Engineering, Sony Pictures, State of Georgia Labor Commissioner, State of Georgia Representative Glenn Baker, Representative Mitch Sebal, Representative Steve Davis, State of Georgia Department of Economic Development Director Ken Stewart, Senator Gail Buckner, and Woodbridge Productions, which is, produces Drop Dead Diva Next Door. Now, one of the most significant areas of support that we've received has been from our U.S. representative, and tonight, he's represented by Andy Bush, and I'm gonna ask Andy to share a moment with you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm Andy Bush, I'm the Deputy District Director for Congressman Wes Moreland. I'm not a good substitute for the congressman, but he's in Washington tonight voting, I took him to the airport today. He's had a chance already to speak to all of y'all personally, and he asked me to be here tonight just to show his... his support for not only the project, but the gentleman behind the project and for each of you. This is obviously a local decision, and he understands that, and he appreciates the decision you guys have to make at a local level. One of the things he's been most concentrated on while he's been a member of Congress, especially in these last couple of years as the economy has kind of grounded to a halt, is job creation and business creation. We're not always in an environment at the national level to create jobs. There's some things he wishes we could do better. We don't like some of the things that we have seen at the national level to "stimulate" the economy, because we felt like a lot of that was good money going after bad. But, at this level, he feels like this is one project that shows not only the promise for today to get us out of this slump, but also an ongoing industry that I think Henry County would be proud of. And so, I just wanted to, again, show our support. I wish it was him standing here instead of me, so that he could personally talk to you about it again. I believe the only commissioner that he hasn't had a chance to talk to was you, sir, but that was with your addition to the board. But if there's any questions later on tonight about his involvement in this, I'd be more than glad to answer it for you. But thanks for letting me speak for just a few minutes. Thanks.
One of the things I would like to add about the congressman is that, as part of this development, that we have this marvelous vision over here for planned development, planned growth would be, and we've talked to the congressman about helping us with some of the infrastructure. As we all know, that the State of Georgia Department of Transportation has some issues with funding, so we would look to get some federal funds there as well. Now, I'm going to call on Bill Thompson right now, who is the Director for the Georgia Office of Film and Digital Entertainment. I think we all know what the last two years have brought to the state with our tax incentives, but I want Bill to share a little bit with you about the latest.
Thank you, Lynn. As Lynn said, I'm Bill Thompson with the Georgia Department of Economic Development. I'm here on behalf of Commissioner Ken Stewart this evening, and he's sorry he couldn't be here with us tonight. As you know, Georgia has created a very competitive incentive that applies to all sorts of entertainment projects. That incentive has done very well for us. In FY09, we experienced investment in the state of $647 million. In calendar year '09, we surpassed that with $770 million in investment in our state. We had 26 feature films during that same period, which is an all-time record. And we could go on and on. I'm sure some of you have seen some of the movies made in Georgia. They're all coming out this year. The Blind Side especially, the Miley Cyrus movie, which was shot down on Tybee Island. So, we're very, very busy, and we are continuing to mature the industry in the state. And one of those important components are that we have more studios and soundstages within the state. When your infrastructure increases, especially when it includes studios and soundstages, it increases the number of projects you can take on, and it immediately causes customers to stay longer, bring bigger projects into our area, and spend much more money. The amount of money that can be spent in a community such as Henry County that is sort of spun off from a large production studio that would be continually full can be very, very immense. To give you an example, one movie that was shot in Savannah last summer, it was the Miley Cyrus movie called The Last Song. That movie utilized 12,000 hotel room nights over a three-month period. And that's not to mention all the money that's spent in restaurants and rental cars and wardrobe and just on and on, hardware stores. The expenditures that can be enjoyed by a local community when you have productions in your area can be quite substantial. And of course, when you have a studio complex that can anchor that sort of activity, again, it becomes even more substantial. So, we are here in support of this project. We hope that you, you know, take a really good, hard look at it and hopefully approve what Big Five has asked of you. And I'd be happy to answer any direct questions if you have any.
Any more members have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. A few months ago, when we were making our presentation, I think it was in the initial presentation, we talked about the need for infrastructure within the state of Georgia. And I think at that time, we used the number of 10 or 12, that the market could stand 10 or 12 soundstages within the marketplace. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention to you that the news with Lakewood Amphitheater being leased by the City of Atlanta did not come as a surprise to us. In fact, our managing partner, Billy Abbott, as well as the operations gentleman that you've met before from Roadtown Enterprises, Jeremy Harrington, were involved with some of those negotiations. And frankly, we opted not to become involved with that project, so that we could focus all our time and resources here in Henry County. So, we want to make sure that you are aware that there's a great demand, as Bill said, and we hope that we will have the real anchor here in Henry County. Now, you heard us talk a little bit a few minutes ago about some of the benefits that Big Five has offered to the Henry County Commissioners and the taxpayers, and we've talked about guarantees, and we talked about the land and the facilities and, you know, the income streams. And at this time, I'm going to ask our managing partner, Billy Abbott, if he would come forward and share a little detail about some of the things that we have prepared for you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me once again to speak to you this evening. First, I'd like to thank those who have appeared before you tonight and honored us with their support. It's a privilege to have you here. To recap, the benefits of the permanent presence of the Film Ministry of Henry County: approval of our request creates viable alternatives to increased taxes and service cutbacks. Last week, I was privileged to spend a day with over 20 of Henry County's law enforcement community, providing advanced firearm training to them as I've done for the past 20 years. And I had to listen to the effects of mandated furloughs that they're going to experience over the course of the next year as a result of budget shortfalls and deficits. That's a situation that I'd like to see reversed. Our project increases tax revenues. Our property remains a tax-producing parcel on Henry County's tax digest. Real estate tax increases can be as much as $3 million per year from our project. Sales tax increments of as much as $9 million per year from our project. Ad valorem tax increases of up to $550,000 per year. Our project is shovel-ready. That means that while there are others who are ready to compete against us, we can still be first to market. Most importantly, our job creations. Jobs created, up to 300 new construction jobs immediately, up to 60 new aviation industry jobs, up to 2,200 new direct movie industry jobs, up to 1,600 new indirect movie industry jobs, significant increases in auxiliary and tourism jobs, increases in hotel and motel taxes, increases in requests for local housing, which would decrease the amount of surplus inventory that sits in Henry County in a latent state, increases in local professional services, and increases in local retail and commercial services. Requests from the Henry County Board of Commissioners necessary for the protection of the taxpayers and that have been provided by Big Five Enterprises include a financial viability report that was produced by the Bleakley Advisory Group. We met and exceeded that report, economic impact study and financial feasibility report, showed that we met and exceeded all financial projections that we did ourselves. The project has the ability to carry debt service with only 7% to 13% market capture rate, as opposed to having to capture 100% of the market that competing states would have to attract in order for them to be viable. This project compares favorably in terms of local attributes, volume of in-state film production, development costs, and an existing film industry support infrastructure. Financing for similar projects has included forms of public financing across the board. All of our competitors have enjoyed public financing, many in the form of free grants. This project represents large economic impacts. This project is partnered with experienced studio management. We have agreed to provide personal guarantees for these bonds. Financial statements were presented to the County Bond Attorney, Jim Monticello. We have agreed to collateralize this project fully in terms of pledging our 97 acres of land, pledging 85,000 square feet of existing hangars, pledging the existing 10-year leases that we currently enjoy cash flow from, pledging the letters of intent for existing 10-year leases on the new aviation infrastructure to be built. We worked with the county to lower the cost of our bond issuance from over $1 million to under $400,000. We've agreed to retire the bonds early at 12 to 13 years. We've agreed to create a sinking fund. The project has a projected 1.9 debt service coverage rate, as quantified by the folks from Bleakley, and typically, one in a quarter is acceptable to most lending institutions. Anything above that is considered exemplary. We've agreed to place incremental dollars above a 1.5 debt service coverage ratio into a county-managed fund that we have no access to. Incremental income generated and put into this fund could be as much as $1.9 million per year. We've agreed to bond for title, and that the title for Atlanta Film Studios will remain the ownership of Henry County Development Authority for the life of the bonds. We've agreed that in the event of default, that all revenue generated by office, aviation, and soundstages will be retained by Henry County. So, we are here tonight to ask the Board of Commissioners, Big Five Enterprises, Atlanta Film Studios, requesting that the Henry County Board of Commissioners approve credit enhancement of the industrial development bonds induced on February 4, 2010, by the Henry County Development Authority. The purpose of the credit enhancement is to ensure that the industrial development bonds are placed as quickly as possible and at an interest rate that strengthens the project. And with that, we respectfully request a vote from the Board.
Does any Board member have a question or a comment for Mr. Abbott, or anyone else who gave a presentation this evening on this item?
I have a comment, I think.
Mr. Stamey?
Bill, you read a lot. We've come a long ways with this thing in the last six months, but I think something else that you left out of, that you were given, was you also said, it's in this resolution, that no money will be spent until the contract is satisfied by the Board of Commissioners.
That is correct.
Is that in your sight?
Yes, sir, that's correct. That's been stated from day one.
Okay, but it's in this resolution?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Don't have anything else?
Any other questions or comments?
I want to open a comment. It says that the City of Hampton, this wasn't in the first one, I don't think. I don't think I saw it in the first one. I just noticed that the City of Hampton is pledging three mills.
That was removed from the current, it should have been removed from the current resolution.
The one that we just got?
The one from before. The City of Hampton was not able to pull that together.
Oh, so that's not part of it?
No, sir. What we agreed to do in lieu of, if you recall the last meeting, the City of Hampton honored us with their support. They do not have city taxes, and in the short period of time that they honored us with their support, they could not pull together a means of conveying their three mills to the project. What we agreed to do with the City of Hampton, and the equivalent in cash of their three mills was $511,000. We agreed to give to the City of Hampton an amount equal to their three mills in a fund that they would manage exactly like the debt service coverage fund that Henry County would manage, and they would be able to keep all the interest off of that until such time as it was agreed upon the funds would be released. And we're willing to do that with the county as well.
I just wanted to clear it up, because it wasn't in the first one we got, but it was in the one that we just received about.
Okay, that was in there. That should have been removed. But it's important to state that that would have given us, in the worst-case scenario, an additional two years of debt service coverage. You know, our offer to pledge those additional funds at the outset of the project in regards to Hampton's pledge would stand also for the Board, and we would still be willing to put those funds up and put in the same debt service coverage fund that we would pledge on day one. Essentially, we have six to seven years of debt service coverage on day one.
Any other questions or comments from Board members? If not, you have a resolution before you, and I'll entertain a motion. Well, I guess you have a resolution before you, striking in the very final paragraph, Item 3, 4, and 5, in reference to the City of Hampton.
Would you want to keep that in there and just Items 3 and 4?
Okay, that's right. You're right. 3 and 4. Items 3 and 4.
Just explain. Isn't 3 the only one that's deleted?
Well, it says, Item 4 says, "The developer of Terra Field project shall provide a cash contribution at least equal to the amounts provided by the City of Hampton available for the Terra Field project in a manner satisfactory to the county." Should that be reworded?
Probably, yeah, there you go. Probably reworded.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the new arrangement with the City of Hampton.
The arrangement was they would pledge the three mills, the cash equivalent of three mills, which in lieu of the concern with the City of Hampton, I don't want to speak on that. If anyone's here, feel free to correct me if I misspeak. The pledge that we were honored to receive from the City of Hampton was the three mills. The cash equivalent of their three mills was $511,000, $515,000, something in that ballpark. They wanted to pledge cash instead of millage, because they felt that since all citizens of the City of Hampton are also citizens of Henry County, it would be double taxation in the event that they had to tap that millage. So, they wanted to pledge the cash. And in return for them pledging the cash, Big Five Enterprises, Atlanta Film Studios, agreed to pledge an equal amount of cash and allow the City of Hampton to manage that fund as well. So, the additional funds that would be put up essentially equates to an additional year of debt service coverage, and we'd be willing to put that into the deal as well with Henry County.
So, Item 4 then should read that the developer will provide a cash contribution at least equal to the amounts of three mills of tax within the City of Hampton?
Yes, ma'am. It's approximately, call it $515,000, I think is what it was.
Okay. So, number 4 will be modified accordingly, and number 3 will be removed. Madam Chair?
Okay. Everybody have those changes?
That's condition number 4 changed, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Strike, number 3 is changed. Reworded number 4 as she directed.
As corrected by the county attorney. Any other questions or comments on this item?
I have one comment. Of course, I came a little late to the game on this, but I have met with the principals involved in this project and encouraged to see this size investment and commitment to this area in my district in this day and age. I also met with my predecessor who was elected by the constituents of District 2 and spent a great deal of time examining this project. And also, I know that the feedback from the citizens of District 2, who would be affected, obviously, by this, has been overwhelmingly in favor of those who have provided feedback directly to the county on this. And I believe it would be irresponsible of me to oppose this project based on those conditions. And at the appropriate time, I would be more than happy to make a motion in favor of approval.
All right. And Mr. Stamey, did you make a motion?
I did, I'll just modify. I mean, I will.
Okay, so, Mr. Rowark, you're willing to make a motion to approve with the changes that were suggested by the county attorney in the striking of the one in reference to the City of Hampton's millage. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rowark?
A second.
And a second by Mr. Stamey. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor and all opposed? Okay. Motion fails. Stamey and Rowark in favor. Basler, Holder, and Bowman opposed. I will, I guess, do we need an addition? I will, I guess, do we need an additional, do we have, do we need another motion to deny?
Well, I think that was the motion, the motion failed.
Well, his was to approve, and the motion failed. Do we need an additional motion to deny?
I don't think so, Madam Chairman. I think that resolution, that motion took care of it.
Let me ask you something with that same thought. Is there an alternate motion to approve? Is there something else that he hasn't brought to us that he might be willing to give us beside his firstborn to approve it?
There could have been an alternate motion.
I don't know. I mean, is there anything else out there?
I don't believe there's an alternate motion on the floor to that.
I think it is, and this is just a thought. You know, I don't think there would be anything to do with it, but we've been tied up, and then there would be no action. It wouldn't be a defeat.
Yes, got you, Mr. Chair. All right, the chairman is going to exercise her right to cast her vote, and I'm going to vote in favor of the project. So we have a tie which results in a no action, and is there any additional information that this board would like to see that might possibly change their opinion before we call for another motion? Is there any information that was not presented by the applicant that we could have him bring forth at a future meeting?
With that same thought, if a hard contract was delivered, would that change anything? I know it's in the agreement, but that no money can be dispersed until a hard contract is delivered, but just a thought. And if there is no action, can it be delayed for another vote if something was to happen in the next 30 days or whatever on Mr. Abbott's side? Is that something we could, if it, something surfaced down the road?
Mr. Bowman?
In speaking with Commissioner Holder, we would certainly entertain looking at a hard contract. However, the assets would have to be determined to be viable, in other words, market value and not book value, number one. Number two, they would have-
Which assets are you referring to, sir?
Whatever assets that you and your partners are agreeing to put up in lieu of, you know, personal assets, whatever those are. They would also have to be encumbered in such a way. I'm just saying that, you know, to entertain it, it would have to be something along those lines that would, this is no, this has no personal bearing, okay? I'm just going to be kind of blunt. Yeah, in my business, I have book value and I have, you know, I have market value. My book value exceeds my market value, that's just part of the way it's, you know, it's put together. But for, you know, to entertain it, I would think that it would receive more favorable, but it would have to be a hard and fast contract, it would have to show that the asset value of everything that you're proposing to put up would be, in fact, market value. I think, I think you know where I'm going with that. And that would also have to be encumbered in such a way as to prove that in the event that it did go upside down, that the citizens would be covered. You know where I'm going with it?
Yes, sir, I understand what you're saying. And I was to add to that, that I think that that request would have been appropriate in the past two weeks after we promptly provided compiled financial statements by our accountant to the county bond attorney.
I do understand that.
Made six days' worth of requests as to whether or not there was anything else that they needed to know.
I understand that, Mr. Abbott, but I received a quote-unquote narrative of a compilation, which maybe in certain terms, that would mean that that's an audited statement.
With all due respect, Commissioner, we were not going to provide audited statements to the Commissioners.
Then that's fine. I didn't ask, I mean, I did say make them available for, you know, the attorney or somebody of that nature. I don't need to see them myself.
No, we complied with it, we provided it to numerous professionals who are capable of analyzing them and making certain determinations from them. The determination that was made, by the way, is that the net worth of my partners and I exceeded the minimum required for them to be considered extremely strong by over 50%. So that has been confirmed by at least three different sources. These are the financials that go to all of our lending institutions. We deal with many banks in the community, and we deal with an accounting firm that's very well thought of in Atlanta. So they're not fixing to risk their professional reputation by cooking some numbers on book versus market value.
Well, I never said, and I said it wasn't personal, and I did say that-
I'm just addressing your comments because it seems to be a recurring thing with our financials. I would just like to state for the record that the financials were provided, they were provided timely. We waited six days for response from the county bond attorney as to whether there was any other information that needed to be required. He did not respond in any way, form, or fashion to the multitude of phone calls that were placed by numerous members of our legal team, as well as by members of the county government, and I have no knowledge of what report he provided to anyone. All I know is what the substance of those financial statements is, and I know that they are very conservative in light of the current lending environment and the problems that people are having with banks.
I was just looking at a way that maybe could be worked, but that's fine, I'm good.
Well, I'm just saying, we've provided and we've complied, and I think that we've done everything the Board has asked. Madam Chair, I would ask at this time, if it's appropriate, I do have a few comments, if that's okay. For the Commissioners who have steadfastly supported our request, I give many thanks. For those Commissioners who have not supported our request but have consistently voiced their opposition and not wavered from their position, I thank you for your decisiveness and for not wasting our time, resources, or money. As we've conveyed many times, this project costs us approximately $20,000 a week with no revenues. For those Commissioners who have not done any of the above, who have offered support and withdrawn support, and caused us to be in the position we now find ourselves in, I offer the following. Henry Board of Commissioners was told from day one that this project would not happen without a credit enhancement of industrial development bonds induced by the Development Authority. We have complied with every request made by the Board of Commissioners and provided pertinent information about our business plan, financial projections, and net worth. This information was conveyed in a public forum, so our competitors now have the majority of the data we've worked so hard to compile. At the request of the Board of Commissioners, our data was audited by an independent third-party, selected by the county at our expense. The results of this audit clearly showed the viability of our project and revealed that we have been extremely conservative in our own financial projections. Five months ago, we were a year ahead of all competition. Now we see on the news that we will not be the first to market, but maybe a distant second, if at all. Instead of standing with Big Five Enterprises and Atlanta Film Studios, who has demonstrated its willingness to do what is in the best interest of Henry County, lack of support of the Board of Commissioners has been the biggest impediment and biggest obstacle to successfully bringing this industry to our community. Lack of support by the Board of Commissioners has made our efforts look unreliable and even risky for potential clients and vendors. Many things have been said about skin in the game. State of Georgia has skin in the game by creating and implementing a 30% tax credit for films that create product in Georgia. Clayton County has even stepped up and assisted our efforts by passing five resolutions allowing us to utilize our 85,000 square feet of clear-span hangars for the purpose of film production. Additionally, they have skin in the game by their creation of a film office geared towards assisting productions who desire to film in Clayton County in the southern crescent of Atlanta. Big Five Enterprises and Atlanta Film Studios has skin in the game to the tune of $13 million in cash and equity invested in this project in addition to the real property, existing leases, and letters of intent for the lease of new aviation infrastructure that will be constructed, all of which would be pledged as collateral to this venture. Additionally, Atlanta Film Studios has ensured that Henry County will benefit by mandating that 100% of the supplies purchased for the construction and operation of Atlanta Film Studios must be processed through Henry County to ensure that Henry County benefits from the sales tax revenues. Henry County has no skin in the game. The credit enhancement of industrial revenue bonds induced by the Development Authority will adequately collateralized, and approximately six years' worth of debt service coverage will be deposited into an interest-bearing account at the outset of this project, an account that will be 100% controlled by Henry County. Support of this project, as you have seen, is widespread across elected officials, officials who represent the same constituency as this Board of Commissioners. Over 400 Henry County citizens have signed a petition in support of the credit enhancement, and to date, not one single citizen has stepped forward to voice opposition to our request in person. Much has been said in this forum about risking taxpayers' money, yet, as this Board is fully aware, millions of dollars of taxpayer money is spent in the form of guaranteed millage on businesses and ventures that generate no revenues and create losses equal to or greater than the millage pledged. Next year, when two studios in Atlanta are hammering out opportunities, jobs, revenue, and hundreds of millions of dollars in economic benefit for the City of Atlanta and Fulton County, how will your taxpayers react to you protecting them when you increase their taxes to cover additional shortfalls in the budget? As a large employer in Henry County and taxpayer and voting constituent, I know how I will react. I appreciate your consideration, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the March 16th, April 5th, and April 6th meeting. Commissioner Roark was not here to vote on those particular minutes, and I have made some grammatical corrections to actually all three of the set of minutes which I will present to the county clerk once these are approved. Are there any additions or corrections that Board members want to make mention of before I ask for a motion? If not, I'll look for approval of the minutes. Have a motion by Mr. Holder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor, motion carries for zero. Mr. County Manager, any comments for public session?
I do have one quick comment regarding a letter to the editor that showed up this week regarding a bid procedure for police cars on behalf of Henry County. And I just wanted to, for public consumption, I think it's important to clear up a couple items within that letter. First of all, it was surprising to see that letter come at the time that it did because two or three weeks before the letter, when Commissioner Basler found out about the problem and the concern of the dealership, we set up a meeting, we met with the owners, and we met with the sales manager and talked through the whole bid process. And when they left there, they were quite satisfied, I'd say. Secondly, to address one of their concerns about the limits of the buy Henry policy, we've asked the county attorney to look into the possibility of expanding the buy Henry policy from the $100,000 level on a sliding scale to a half-million-dollar level. And thirdly, in that bid procedure itself, although price is always important, the critical point, because of the use of special funds in this purchase, the critical point in this bid procedure was delivery date, and another vendor provided a better delivery date. So I think those types of things might flesh out the letter to the editor a little bit more, and I think maybe the public will be a little more understanding of the procedure that we went through. If you all have any questions, I'm glad to answer those.
Any questions?
I have one remark, which you referred to as a better delivery date. The dealership that won the bid had a guaranteed delivery date.
Correct.
And when are we taking, start taking these vehicles, this week?
I think Mike said we get several vehicles this week.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
We have one person who has signed up for public comment, Ms. Gwen Nishisaki of 743 Windbrook Drive in McDonough. She's here to speak on the campground road extension. If you would, please step to the podium, and you have five minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you very much. I have a picture I'd like to put out. Can we move the computer or?
Yeah, you can just slide it right.
Just close it? Oh, it's going to go up here, isn't it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your help. Hello, my name is Gwen Nishisaki. I live at 743 Windbrook Drive, which is part of the Winslow at Eagles Landing subdivision, and I am speaking tonight on the campground road extension. Mr. Roark, this may be a new issue to you, so I, no, good, good, I'm glad that you're aware of it. In 1996, when the land was, the exchange of land was executed, and one day that there might be a campground road extension, it may have made sense that campground road be extended and be a major east-west connector. Now, in 2010, I wonder, does it still make sense? One exit to the north, we have Eagles Landing Hudson Bridge, which is currently being expanded. One exit to the south, we have Jonesboro Road, which has already been expanded. I also wonder, is it Henry County's vision that we have economic retail development at every exit on 75 as we move from the north to the south? And speaking of 75, in the mornings, the northbound direction backs up at Jodaco Road. It is bumper-to-bumper crawling pretty much every morning. So again, does it make sense to create an east-west connector that flows more traffic into 75 that can't handle the traffic it already is getting? Now, when Eagles Landing is finished, the people that currently use campground have a choice to go north, one exit, to a road that's already expanded, to a highway that can accommodate more cars getting on at Eagles Landing and passing 675 than what Jodaco and the interchange at Jodaco allow now. So again, I ask, does it make sense? Henry County has defended the campground road extension both in print and verbally with two points, one being that the right-of-way is owned by the county, and the other being that the citizens voted for it. Henry County does own the right-of-way, there's no question, but does that mean a road has to be put in there? That is a good question. As far as the citizens and when they voted for it, SPOLOST 2 was voted for in November of 2002, SPOLOST 3 was voted for in November of 2007. As we've already heard tonight, the economic times in 2010 are considerably different than the economic times when those two SPOLOST votes were taken. So I'm not really convinced that what was voted for in 2007 is still valid in 2010, especially when we consider that the elementary children in our subdivision do not have bus service to flip an elementary. If a four-lane, 45 mile-per-hour, 20,000 minimum cars a day and trucks is split right through the middle of our subdivision, as the times are now, we will have elementary school children that need to cross those four lanes to get to school. Again, I ask, does it make sense? Commissioner Holder, you spoke earlier about mallards and your concern for the mallards. This picture is of a deer, was taken this past Sunday right over the backyard of one of our local residents. We have deer, we have lots of birds that inhabit the area under consideration. I would encourage you to give as much consideration to the wildlife in our area as you did to the mallards in the other area. And finally, I would like to say that we all know that you didn't create this. This is not of your making. However, when an injustice is witnessed, if people fail to act to stop the injustice, then I believe they're every bit as guilty as the people that created the injustice. So again, I- So again, I ask you, please don't split our subdivision in half. Please look at alternates for the road, which can include turn lanes off of Jodaco Road at strategic points. It can include expanding Jodaco from Peach Road to the highway. There are alternates.
It's expired.
You're right, thank you.
Thank you. The upcoming meetings and events, Friday, May 28th at 9:00 a.m., a called meeting to adopt the 2010-2011 budget. Monday, May 31st, all county offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day. Monday, May 31st, there will be a Veterans' Wall of Honor Memorial Day service. The Veterans' Wall of Honor is located at 101 Lake Dow Road in McDonough. For more information, you can go to www.hcprd.org, or you can call 770-288-7300. Tuesday, June 1st at 9:00 a.m., we will have a regular board meeting. If there's no further business to come before this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.